Call the meeting of the common council for Tuesday, July 30th, 2024 to order, clerk?
Thank you, your honor. We have ten members in the room, one member is excused and one member is attending via Zoom.
All right, thank you so much clerk. Now, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I'm excited.
For an invocation offered by Alder Morgan.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alder Morgan?
I really was impressed last week by Alder Hutchison's great letters from his mother and all that, and I started thinking about my heritage, going back to Wales and even great grandmother, great, great, great grandmother coming over from Scotland and Ireland. And so I remember one of my favorite prayers, hopefully this isn't too long for everyone, it's an Irish thing, so. May the strength of God pilot us, may the wisdom of God instruct us, may the hand of God protect us, and may the word of God direct us. Amen.
Thank you, Alder. Entertained a motion on the approval of the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Alder Prophet, seconded by Alder De Lee. These are the minutes from the June 25th meetings. I read a couple on, on June 25th. Any changes there? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it, the minutes are approved. Approval of the agenda. Motion to approve made by Alder Stevens, seconded by Alder Prophet. Any changes there? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it, and the agenda is approved. Report by the mayor. I'll keep it short. We've got an election coming on August 13th, really already underway in many respects with absentee ballots out and early voting occurring here at, at city hall. So just wanted to, to flag that for you all, of course, as Alders, but more importantly for our, our community. And of course, thanks to the clerk and her staff for doing all the great work to, to make that possible. So we've got, you know, a, a couple of races have primaries, there's constitutional, a couple of constitutional amendments, so obviously just encouraging everybody to get educated and turn out for, for that election. With that, move along to announcements from council members. Alder Morgan?
I just wanted to thank those of you that were able to come out to our Green Bay City Employee Night at the Green Bay Blue Ribbons game. I know it's always fun for me when everyone comes. To me, the Blue Ribbons are the biggest secret we have in Green Bay. Everyone thinks of the Ashwabanon Rockers, but they don't know we have another baseball team that plays at Joannys', and I'm glad to say, we only have a couple of games left. We did win the Northeast Wisconsin Baseball League, took first place, and in the state league, we had a rough weekend down in Chicago, so we are ending up in second place, just a game out though. So if you want to look forward to next year, hopefully we can get this city to come again, and some, some of you might want to check out Green Bay Blue Ribbon Baseball at Joannys Field.
That was great. Thanks so much for hosting, city employees. I thought the first pitch was a strike, but my family, you know, they disagreed, but it was close regardless.
I thought it was excellent.
Any other announcements? All right, we'll then move along to appointments. We've got one reappointment. Entertained a motion. Motion to approve made by Alder Stevens.
Seconded.
Seconded by Alder Presley. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it, that appointment is confirmed. Now, we've got two public hearings here. The first one, public hearing on a request to amend the city's comprehensive plan for the property located at 2532 University Avenue, 2540 University Avenue, and 2500 Block University Avenue, parcel 21-1249-1-3, from a combination of light industrial and commercial land uses to medium-high density residential use. Is anyone here for that public hearing? Is anyone here for that public hearing? Anyone in attendance for that public hearing? All right clerk, let the record reflect, there's no one in attendance for that item. This next one has actually been withdrawn at our petitioner's request, but I still need to read this. So, "Public hearing on a request to establish a planned unit development for the property located at 1820 Frank Street, submitted by Verbicker on behalf of Wisco Short Term Rentals LLC, property owner." Is there anyone here for that hearing? Anyone here for that public hearing? Anyone here for that public hearing? All right, there again clerk, let the record reflect, no one is in attendance. Next, we have a presentation on the 2025 NFL Draft. We've got the NFL, or the Packers rather, in attendance, represented by Aaron Popke, we've got Discover Green Bay, Brad Toll and Nick Meisner, and then we have some representation from our public safety team, Captain Allen is in attendance. So whoever would like to jump up to the podium and begin, we'll get things going.
Good evening. Mayor, council, team, staff, everyone. Great, great to be here, great to have the opportunity to be able to present tonight. As Mayor mentioned, we've got Discover Green Bay and Captain Allen here. We'll, we'll walk through where we're at, at a high level with the NFL Draft for now, and then open up to questions if there are some. But hopefully a lot of you are familiar with some of this information, just from news reports and, and attending other meetings, those types of things, but we'll, we'll bounce through and take a look at some images and talk about some information and answer some questions. There we go. So I thought we'd take a little walk through Lambo Field. So this is what it looks like today, and, and as I've done some presentations for neighborhoods and, and other groups, it's, it's fun to look back to see what it all entails, both today and going back through the years. So just to take a look at the campus today. So we've got stadium and then what we call the campus, which for us and purposes of the draft, talking about east and west, which includes the Resh Complex to the east, nearer on the screen, and, and to the west, Title Town there. That, that, those areas are going to make up primarily what the draft campus is. But I think it's important to go back to 1957, and when the stadium first opened up. We did a neighborhood meeting, Lombardi Neighborhood Meeting, and Alder Weary wasn't able to attend that night, but he knows this. I asked just for a show of hands, hey, anyone around in 1957 when it opened? Several hands went up. So we heard a few memories of, of those times, those years ago, if anyone else can think back to those times. But kind of neat to see the hands go up and talk about the stadium then and how it's evolved over the years. Fully enclosing the bowl, adding some sky boxes, adding in some more premium seating, enclosing the bowl fully, and what it looked like right before the redevelopment in 2003. On the left there, and on the right is what it looked like when it opened in 2003, and what we know it looks like today. So what's really been nice certainly is the evolution of this stadium, certainly to hold football games, but as we know, in the last decade plus, we've held other large events. They're really going back to, the first one I'll talk about is after the Super Bowl victory in 2010, some of you may recall we had the Back to Football Concert, which coincided with opening night of the season Thursday night, which is something the NFL instituted some time ago, and it continues to this day. For the team that wins the Super Bowl, they get to host that first game, and there's a big celebration that goes around it. So some of you that may remember that, the, the other reason why this is good to bring up is because at the time, our capacity of the stadium was just over 70,000, 73,000 or so, and this concert drew tens of thousands of people. Those of us that were there remember seeing the, the concert and all the people that were at that intersection of Armed Forces and Oneida, and 30,000 people by some estimates. We figured that would dissipate when the stadium opened up and, and people made their way into the stadium. Well, close to kickoff, stadium was full, there's still 20 to 30,000 people out there. So we know that footprint can handle 100,000 people easy. And at that time, it was not an organized event in terms of all the planning that goes into, for people to park and shuttle and, and make their way to the stadium in a fashion that we're going to see for the draft. So it's, it's good, one, it's good to reminisce about coming off a Super Bowl and the big victory, or the party that goes with it, but two, to know that that area can accommodate a big crowd like that. We've had our opening weekend kickoff weekend concerts that have drawn large crowds. This was the Steve Miller Band on the east side of the stadium, in the Oneida Street parking lot on, on the east, as I mentioned. We've had college, college football game, we're going to have another one, but this is Wisconsin LSU. Big event that brought in a lot of people that don't normally come to a Packers game. So you had the LSU crowd, you had the Wisconsin crowd that came in that weekend. Again, this city can host a big get together with thousands, tens of thousands of people from out of town. So another good example. Of course, concerts, Paul McCartney Show here, and then more recently, the soccer friendly between Bayern Munich, excuse me, and Man City, upwards of nearly 80,000 people. Again, a lot of people from, from out of the city that came in to take in that match. So again, we know this campus can, can hold people, and all the planning that's going into it now is going to allow us to do so over the course of three days in a very organized and orderly way. So we're excited about that. Just a little bit about the draft. Why did our teams want a bid on the draft? As much as we think Lambo could host a Super Bowl, and it could as a stadium, but there's a lot more that goes into it, and primarily the weather is the biggest concern for hosting the Super Bowl in February. They did it in New York as a one-off special situation. It worked out, they got lucky because the, the day or two after, they got socked with a snowstorm, which would have made it very interesting. So as Mark Murphy and others at the Packers said, we're going to focus on hosting conference championships games. But when the draft became something that went on the road back in 2015, and 16 in Chicago, right away, the NFL knew they had something special. A tent pole event that they could take on the road, take it to different cities, and see what fans would do in those cities, both residents of that area, of that state, but also people coming in from other football areas, or just other areas in general. And shortly after that draft in 2015, the NFL said, you know what, we're going to likely take this on the road, put notes out to all the teams and said, if you and your city are interested in hosting this, let us know. And Mark Murphy spoke right away to those of us at the Packers, and Brad Toll, almost right away, said, hey, they're going to take that thing on the road, we got to get it in Green Bay. So you can see the timeline here of where it's been. Right away, we put in our expression of interest. Brad and I went to Philadelphia in 17. I had some coworkers go to Nashville in 19. Brad and I and colleagues went to Cleveland, to Las Vegas, to Kansas City. A lot of us were in Detroit, including people in this room, the mayor and members of, of his team. And so we've been preparing all this time, and as we've built up, we knew it was going to be an effort that was going to take a couple of different stakeholders. So with Discover Green Bay, the, the Packers started our process with the NFL, and it, it took some convincing, and it took more infrastructure around the stadium, such as Resh Expo and the buildout of Title Town, and, and everything that we've seen elsewhere in the city too, additional hotels, more amenities, more opportunities for taking in the community, those types of things. And with the city of Green Bay and others, we updated our information on a continual basis with the NFL to let them know we really wanted to host. Part of that bid was leaning into our bike kid tradition that goes back to 1958. The NFL appreciated that, along with everything else that Green Bay is going to bring to the table as, as a, as a destination for the draft. We are so unique in so many different ways. The history, early days of the NFL, as, as you may know, 1919 when the Packers were founded predates the NFL. The NFL was formed in 20, the Packers joined the NFL in 21. So they're going to be able to lean into all the history and tradition of the NFL, of the Packers, and we wanted to have some fun with the bikes. We know it's going to be a big impact. Here's a, a little look at some of the other cities where it's been hosted, population centers that they have, and economic impact that was obtained. We know from a couple of different drafts, the visitors that come in. Couple of examples here with Cleveland and Kansas City, terms of percentage within driving distance, those staying overnight, those types of things. We, we anticipate we'll see similar, if, similar visitorship here in Green Bay. Detroit, we're, we're seeing some of their information, which we're diving into. I know they've had, they had visitors from all 50 states, plus 20 foreign countries, and a tremendous amount of people drove from within 100 miles to Detroit. So we know we're going to draw, certainly from around the state. We've got NFL markets that are within a drive, Minneapolis, Chicago, Indianapolis, even a little bit farther away, Detroit, St. Louis. Fans from all 32 clubs go to the draft, and we're going to have a beautiful spring weekend in late April. Our Packers are going to be coming off a really exciting season, so there's going to be a lot of excitement from our home state fans and Packers fans from all over the country, but, but football fans in general, we, we know are going to come. And our current estimates are this, terms of attendance, we've talked about taking a look at Detroit numbers and perhaps updating these accordingly. But these were numbers we put together based on previous drafts, Cleveland, Kansas City, Nashville, those types of things. We know overall, because of the state to be impacted, we'll have 94 million or so, and here in Green Bay, greater Green Bay, 20 million. But we'll see, diving into some of those numbers from Detroit, if we think we need to adjust those. And we know for our community, like a game weekend, north of $15 million for a game, we're going to have about three game days in a row in Green Bay. The media attention throughout the state, but also internationally, and the big type of events that Wisconsin has hosted. You think of the Ryder Cup a few years ago, down in Kohler and Sheboygan area, tens of thousands of people each day for those events. The EAA in Oshkosh, annually, several hundred thousand people go to Oshkosh for that. So our area is used to having big time events, and this is going to be Green Bay's big time event. So we're excited about that. Revenue wise in Green Bay, it is something that we plan on losing money on. There's not a ton of revenue opportunities, there's more expenses that are being put up. We've got a lot of great donors that are going to support us in, in setting the table for the NFL to come in and build the draft, but it's, there's some ancillary revenue that will come in, but is definitely an event that we are planning on losing some money on, and that is good for us because we know it's going to be such a great positive event for the city and the region. Little bit about Detroit. If you watch that on TV or, or seeing some of the news coverage, really substantial attendance there. They reported 275,000 in round one, and 700,000 plus over the three days. I, I think it was a really nice weekend weather wise, so you had a million people, pardon me, Detroit is about a four million person metro area. So you had nice weather, you had the Lions coming off a good season, a lot of Lions fans wanted to gather with their fellow Lions fans and see this draft and what it was all about. So really, really impressive numbers over the, over the three days, and you can see some of those there, in terms of attendance in person, but viewership and TV, economic impact that was generated was just tremendous, and it, it really was helpful for Detroit in terms of those media impressions and just visitors. And that is something that's going to live on as a legacy for Detroit and the downtown. For anyone who's been to Detroit over the years, they had some challenges, and, and what they've done to that downtown, and, and now being able to show it off through this event was really great for them. And we want to do the same thing for Green Bay and greater Green Bay, our community, all these visitors coming in and showing them what we're all about. So we had a big team there, along with Discover Green Bay, some, some things that we saw that we want to make sure we emphasize as we prepare here with the food and beverage offerings, merchandise, the experience inside the event itself, certainly security and safety, signage, and, and other things that, that we all saw, who, those who were able to attend, things that we feel we can improve upon. And of course, we've got our draft, the 24th through the 26th, and boy, it'd be exciting to have a, a first round pick, turn out to be a player like Jair Alexander. But I, I think for the Packers and fans to have a first round pick selected in Green Bay, that'll be a fun moment. So I mentioned the group that's putting it together, Packers and Discover Green Bay, PMI, who runs the Resh Complex, they're a big player in this as well with the facilities, and certainly coordinating with local municipalities, including Green Bay, the main player in that regard. So just to take a look at our particular area, and I'll, I'll, on maybe Ben to step up here shortly. This is the campus I mentioned earlier. If we pull out, look straight above, the campus and, and the perimeter is still being set, but we do know this, that on the north end, it's going to be along Lombardi, and that'll stretch east all the way to perhaps Holmgren Way, but somewhere near the end of the Resh Center, and on the south, all the way down to McCarthy. Armed Forces will be part of the campus as an entrance point to the theater, but, but Mike McCarthy Way, and come along the south side of the stadium, through those parking lots, and Valley View Road, and up into Ashwabanon, along the south side of Title Town. So those of you who are familiar with that area, you can kind of obviously use this image to, to help you have a sense of where the, the perimeter will be, and the gates will be established, still determining where best to have those. But what we saw in Detroit is, is the NFL and, and the public safety and logistics folks want to make sure that we aren't simply having people enter right at the draft theater, which we feel, every indication is, that's going to be that big theater that we see images of, will be on the east side, along Oneida Street, near Lombardi. You know, where that stage gets placed ultimately is still to be determined. As they go through their drafts, it's already moved around a little bit within that. That'll be the, as you can, as you may know or even see from this picture, that is the largest quadrant, if you will, to provide that big space for those tens of thousands of people to be in front of the, the stage in the draft theater to view the draft. And then the rest of the campus going west will be the NFL Experience, and that is interactives, galleries, food and beverage, interactives for the kids. There's a big load of activity that can take place there, and we'll have some other descriptions of that. But as we look at the campus, wanted to look a little bit about to the north and south. You know, one thing that we're going to be setting up are, are shuttles from different points around the metro area to bring people in, park and ride, that sort of thing. There's going to be rideshare drop offs, we're going to have pedestrian ways in, bikes, other types of transportation. But we know also there's going to be a fair amount of parking that takes place near the stadium and the neighborhoods, and that's something that we see on a game day or any other large activity. And so this image is to the south, and we anticipate all the way to at least Coramere. And to the north, all the way to at least Ninth into Green Bay, but likely perhaps even part of it. The one thing that the NFL does is really communicate what takes place during the draft, be it schedules, shuttles, parking, all those things that I referenced. The NFL One Pass is an app that you're going to hear a lot about as we approach the draft. Here's some screenshots of the different things that are within that app, including a map of the, the space itself. The, the one, the image on the left is a static image, and the one on the right is a, a live image in, in the sense where you can zoom in and, and click on different things, and it'll give you more information about that interactive map. Example of the schedule on the left, and on the right is something that we know will be utilized here in Green Bay and greater Green Bay, just the other areas of attraction that will be there, in terms of restaurants, theaters, museums, other types of things that people can take in. A group of us will be working with local activities to gather all that information, colleagues at Discover Green Bay, namely Nick.
Hi, Nick.
We'll collect all these things and work with the NFL to populate all this information that'll be within the app. Here's an example of shuttle access and, and transportation options to get to the campus in Detroit. So we'll have these types of maps for Green Bay. Another shuttle map, park and ride options, those types of things. I mentioned our supporters and donors who are helping us raise money to put on this event. Our budget right now is north of eight million, still adjusting as more details come into place, but these are companies a lot of you are familiar with, flagship-type country, companies here in our community and statewide. Another opportunity for our community is NFL Source, which is what the NFL's program is to engage local companies to support the draft. Their focus is on diverse companies, but, but also certainly local companies between minority-owned, women-owned, veteran-owned, LGBTQ communities, those types of diverse businesses. They want to engage and help them grow, not only to help support the draft and be contracted companies with the draft, but an ongoing program to help these companies become more stable businesses and grow their businesses. We were excited to, to get involved more with this. Some of you may be familiar with the Packers Mentor Protege Program. Working with similar types of businesses, we're in our 15th year and have some really neat stories. In fact, some of those companies will have the opportunity to engage with the draft, but we're excited to see that just for some of the work that had already taken place in the community. And if you go on the website, the, the draft portal for Green Bay is open, and you can see they use this program for their other tent pole events, such as the Super Bowl and the Combine. And this is what the page looks like for Green Bay, and some of the businesses that will be needed. Event production, if you think of a large festival, the types of businesses that go into that. This is currently open for businesses to apply to, and you've got a number of companies in Green Bay and across the state that have already been preparing for this. You have to be accredited in these various categories to, to have that connection. But again, if they go through and do not find a diverse business that can fit their needs, the NFL will want to focus on local businesses too. So this opportunities for all, there are about 60 businesses in Detroit that supported the draft. The NFL wants to increase that to 100 moving forward. So we have that opportunity here in Green Bay. The other opportunity that we have is for local people to work the draft. The program they have called is Teammates, and they're going to hire about 1,800 people to work the draft. In Kansas City, they had 9,000 people apply. In Detroit, they had 12,000 people apply. So it'll be interesting to see how many people apply for the Green Bay draft. And some of the things we're doing is, is working on ways for people to engage in the draft, particularly companies. You know, if you are going to engage in the draft with your employees, there's some ways to do that. Do you want to have a tailgate at your business and, and provide transportation over to the campus? You know, do you consider closing your office for the day? It is a free event, the draft is, for anyone to attend. We're working on some wrinkles, including maybe a, a bike parade on Saturday. And other companies are going to host annual conferences and meetings that, that take place each year. They're going to schedule them the week of the draft, just to engage and soak up the energy that comes with that. So there's lots of ideas. So, there's lots of ideas. The other thing that we're doing, along with the Packers and Discover Green Bay and the Chamber, New North, WEDC, all these organizations that support business and give businesses ideas how to grow their businesses, we're going to have a guide of sorts that will give them some ideas of how to engage in the draft. And say you're a business that doesn't, isn't going to directly support the draft, what can you do to maximize the draft being in Green Bay to boost your business? We will continue to have information updated on Packers.com, Discover Green Bay. We encourage, I know municipalities and other neighborhood groups will have links to the information. We just want to make sure it's available and out there for everyone to see. And I mentioned the One Pass app as that launches next spring, that'll have information as well. Some things that are coming up, certainly, the Host Committee continues its work. We've had numerous site visits by the NFL, just a couple of weeks ago, in fact. We've got another one coming up in September. Things that we continue to work on, public safety, parking, transportation plans. We're going to continue to engage with potential donors. Continue to have town halls, neighborhood meetings, really continue these types of presentations as that information gets updated. Supplier diversity program, I mentioned. We work with our hotels locally, who are going to be hosting our visitors, as well as the workers. We have a tremendous opportunity as workers come in, up to five, five to six weeks out, to start preparing the site. They're going to want to see what Green Bay is all about, and they'll be staying at different hotels throughout the area. So, we've got some opportunities there, and we want to make sure we're showing them what our community is all about. Short-term rentals are something that everyone's, or many people are interested in. We have some resources for those. And certainly, the city aspects of things that the city's working on and regulations and rules and ordinances that need to get discussed and those types of things. So, and moving into '25, we've got some other programs. Taste of the Draft will be a unique program. It'll be the first of its kind around the draft, where we're going to be celebrating some nonprofits. Stay tuned on that. And of course, we're going to continue to market and promote the draft, and the state's going to be a big cue to travel, travel to Wisconsin. And just a little example here, we're going to have some corn mazes throughout the state with a little draft and football theme this fall. So, we'll have some fun with that. So, with that, that's a quick overview. I would invite any of my colleagues here, if there's things you want to touch on, I'm ready specifically, or anything you want to touch on with respect to some of these more specifics. There's an image here, I should mention, this was just last week. Public safety, as you may know, does regular preparations for the football season and games at Lambeau Field. And there was an exercise that took place last week. But it also serves as a, another way to prepare for the large-scale events, such as the draft. And these are things that take place, additional training because of the draft and things that go off the NFL. All the public safety teams get to go through those exercises and fine-tune their training, and that's at no extra cost to the city itself. So, that's another nice benefit that comes from certainly the NFL season each year, but also planning for the draft. That would be it for now. I also want to add a few points on these finer points.
All right, just real quick, if you look at our footprint, and you kind of see that very linear layout of what we're going to have. And from a public safety perspective, we're pretty excited about that. Having spent some time over in Detroit and worked with Detroit PD, if you think about probably the most challenging place to have this size of an event is exactly where they decided to have it. There's some big challenges with high-rise buildings and Overwatch for, you know, potential threats that could house themselves on top of buildings. International Waterway on the south end of their footprint. They had an elevated train system that went through the site several times. So, those challenges are things that we're not going to have challenges with. And again, that linear design of what we're thinking this footprint's going to look like is really going to help the public safety perspective of it, and I think it's going to cause less impact to our community as far as traveling through. And that entire area, there will be road closures without a doubt. But it's going to be easy to navigate around that during the event time, though we're also bringing lots of fans in. You know, we all saw the pictures of Detroit, and it looked just packed in those footprints. We also know that our footprint is much larger than what Detroit had, as far as open spaces go. Utilizing Lambeau Field itself is one of the ideas for the planning. Just thinking about people coming in that don't ever get to experience that gem that we have in our city. Sorry. So, being able to go in there, that's another draw for our folks. Public Safety has been very engaged with our hotel, hotel folks throughout really the metro area, and talking about, you know, the see something, say something, training, what to expect when large crowds come in, how to best utilize their space. And we have really good partnerships with a lot of those hotel, hotel owners, managers, those types of things. So, I think we're on, off to a really good start. In fact, I think at some point, Mayor, we may have to put the Detroit captain that I'm working with on our payroll, because I'm on the phone with him all the time. Very happy to help us and an excellent resource for us. So, I think having that to lean on for what the difficult location they had their space in and pulled it off amazingly. Very little public safety issues or concerns. What we also learned out there, this is a very family-focused event. This isn't the typical game day environment where, you know, it's a lot of Wisconsin celebrating. It's more of a family-focused event, though we will see the celebrating and the fun. What I noticed during the daylight hours were a lot of families. So, I think we'll have our hands full with, you know, kids walking away from parents or parents walking away from kids. You know, that's one of the things they dealt with over there. At night, it was just pure football fans, fantasy football enthusiasts is really what we saw down in the footprint. And then our theater stage area is about four times bigger, is that right? It's about four times bigger than what you saw that really packed picture from Detroit. So, we have a lot of space there. That's good, because we have a lot of space there, but that's challenging, because that's a lot of space there. So, the good thing about this, this is on a very familiar footprint to us with the game days that we work and have worked for many, many years. So, that really helps that. We have a great partnership and leadership team going with the Sheriff's Office, Ashwabanon Public Safety, our own fire department. We meet monthly at this point. And, you know, just updates, and we will continue to do that as we move through this. I think those meetings will grow. We'll have those a little more often as we push into the later months of this year and then certainly next year. I have my expectations for our team, and we've been able to meet a lot of those. But we'll continue that work and certainly answer those questions and give updates as we move through this.
Hi, everyone. Just to kick it back a little bit to business engagement and promotion and marketing, as we roll through winter of 2024 and into the spring of 2025, for Alders in the room, as your businesses are asking questions about how they can engage with the draft, we will be developing more materials and, as Aaron mentioned, engaging with the NFL and building out that One Pass app. Another thing I just wanted to mention that we are working on is a newspaper-style guide that will be delivered leading up to the draft, that will have tons of information. We'll work with all the local businesses to get as much as we can in there about how draft fans can experience Green Bay. That'll be distributed not only through Discover Green Bay brochure distribution channels, which includes most of the attractions, all of the hotels, restaurants, where you see, you know, our guides and brochures and things like that, but also through USA Today, Gannett Network, the Green Bay Press Gazette, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel. And I believe we're looking at a few other papers as well, regional ones, Wausau, and then in the western part of the state as well. So, there'll be more information coming on how businesses can engage with that, as well as a playbill-style guide that'll be delivered inside the draft footprint during the event. So, we know that businesses are looking for ways to engage, and as the planning process continues and we get more information, you'll find more and more resources that are getting distributed. I would encourage you all to look at greenbay.com/draft25, as that's where the majority of those business engagement pieces and how to get information from, about our local businesses to visitors who are planning their trip, that'll be the main vehicle for that. So, I'd be happy to answer anything that your businesses have. You can send them over to Aaron, myself, Brad, about how businesses can engage with the event. Thank you.
Awesome. Well, thanks, Aaron and Nick and Captain Allen and Brad for being here and all the works, particularly to Aaron and Brad for getting this event to town and your respective teams. As Aaron said, this was a multi-year effort and took a lot of, a lot of thought, a lot of planning, a lot of dedication to making it happen. So, we really appreciate that. And to Ben and the teams at not just PD, but Fire Chief Knott and all of his team, honestly, that's what gives me the most confidence that we're going to be able to put on a fantastic event is the fact that we have police and fire departments within the city, and then also, you know, our county sheriff's office, as well as Village of Ashwabanon, and folks that are really used to pulling events of this size and scope together. Obviously, this is going to be a bit larger than what we see on a typical game day, but it's a, it's a pretty well-oiled machine, and these folks are really used to coordinating well together. So, as I said, that's what gives me the most confidence. But super excited about what this means for the community, our business improvement districts, you know, just kind of rolled out some of their thoughts and plans within the last couple of weeks. And so, that's the only other thing that I would say is, if you're a member of the community tuning in, and if you have an idea, as Nick said, like feel free to connect with Discover Green Bay. Also, feel free to reach out directly to my office. Happy to take those in and kind of distribute them to the appropriate place. But again, thanks so much for everything you've done to this point. Thanks for coming here to present. Also, wanted to thank Alder Weary for suggesting a presentation and really wanting you all to come here and present to council and offer the opportunity for questions. He's the fortunate guy on council to actually represent Lambeau Field. So, particular interest to him, obviously, and his residents. So, thanks for flagging that for us. But with that, I'll open it up to members of council for questions. Yeah, Alder Prophet.
So, I just want to thank you all. First and foremost, I echo the mayor's sentiments. One thing I wanted to ask about was, you showed the footprint extensively surrounding Lambeau and kind of what that looks like. I know representing the 7th District, City Stadium is often shown on prime game times as, you know, there's a new bust there, and there's a lot of history that goes around City Stadium. The trolley stops there, leading up. I see fans all the time taking selfies with that part of town. So, I guess I was just wondering if there's any events being planned in other areas of the city outside of just that Title Town district near the stadium.
Thanks for the question. The NFL is going to focus primarily on the campus, but they do have some community outreach events that'll take place throughout the city and the community as a whole. I know the mayor and his team have talked about are the ways to use the stadium as well. You know, whether it's something that's official with the NFL or something that gets built on one of the shoulder times of the draft. So, we definitely know that that's out there as an option. And those are the types of things that, you know, there are opportunities for different types of things at the NFL that does ask for different space in the community for these one-off type of events. So, it's definitely known as a neat place for all the reasons you mentioned, the history and tradition that are there. So, that's something we'll continue to make sure the NFL is aware of for that. And if not, an NFL event, something else that could be fun and draft-related.
Thank you.
Sure.
A great point and question, Alder. That's definitely something that we've been contemplating. Had some preliminary conversations with the school district about that site. And not just that site, though, obviously, they have a number of school buildings and facilities that won't be having kids go into class through those days, so for a variety of reasons, you know, it could make sense to collaborate with them. So, definitely something we're thinking of, but feel free to reach out with other ideas. Alder Weary and then Alder Hankfuss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. And thank you, Mr. Poppy, for coming to Lombardi Neighborhood Association. I know they greatly appreciated it. I had another meeting that same night, so you can't unfortunately be two places at once, but I heard you did a great job. And I know that collaboration is going to continue all the way through. They really do appreciate it, you know, being in the shadow of Lambeau there. For Officer Allen, you know, the neighborhood around there, obviously, it's mostly mine, it's a little bit of Alder X as well. Great excitement, incredible excitement. They're friends and neighbors. Everybody wants to stay with them during that time and walk into the draft. But then there's also a lot of valid trepidations, right, about parking, you know, around hydrants and driveways that you get on game day, and there's never a response. So, people get parked in, you know, hydrants get parked in, speeding, things of that nature. So, they're very concerned about that, that we'll have extra people. And then safety and response times. I don't really need an answer now, but those, I just want to hear, they want to hear that that's something that you have in the back of your mind.
It absolutely is. I attended the Lombardi Neighborhood Association meeting too, and heard that loud and clear that that was one of, one of the issues that is out there. I mean, we've talked as a staff that our primary concern is the city at all points. So, we have a great partnership and developing a really good plan to work with the Sheriff's Office and Ashwabanon, and we're one big happy law enforcement family on the footprint area. So, normally, if you look at a game day, it's a Green Bay police officer working with a Green Bay police officer working with a Green Bay police officer. What our plan is with this, with the draft, because it's kind of an extended period of time, is a Green Bay police officer will be working with an Ashwabanon public safety officer. So, with those, those resources in mind, we'll still be able to understand the priority of manning the city, the city's needs first. So, that is something that's the forefront of this planning, and we do absolutely plan on working with the Lombardi Neighborhood, because that's one of them that's going to be very impacted by that. But you are right, they are very excited about it. It was a great meeting to attend, just to see that excitement and what they want to do in their neighborhoods. It'll be, it'll be really exciting.
Appreciate it. Thanks. Yeah, it's going to be a great event. I'd be remiss if I didn't just at least mention the concerns, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Alder Hankfuss.
Thank you. Question, are we going to be using NWTC as kind of a park and ride, sort of thing? Okay, that'll be good to let my district know. The other question I have is, do people need a pass to get into the draft?
Alder Hankfuss? Could you just use your mic?
Forget about it. Do people need a pass to get into the draft? And when we talk about it being east and west, north and south, is that, there's only going to be certain entry points for that?
Yep. So, the plan is how we flow people in, both from a public safety perspective, but then also the, really the production portion of it, the draft portion of it anyway. It's really how we get people safely into that footprint and really kind of directing them to those event things that are happening inside the footprint as that builds to the theater stage, because that's kind of the later-in-the-evening piece. It is a general admission event, so there are no tickets needed, there are no passes needed. While there are some passes in some, like VIP areas that are in the tent that require a pass, overall, 99.9% is open to the public general admission. And with that, we always hear what the next question with that is, what does that security screening look like for the general admission? Very similar to game days. So, if you ever went to a Packer game, you know, you go through security, through a metal detector screening, through a police officer screening, and then through a secondary screening if that's needed. So, it's going to be very similar to that, that experience.
Any other questions from council? All right. Thanks again for being here. Really appreciate the presentation and all the efforts involved. Thank you. Next, we'll move along to ordinances, second reading for adoption. Entertaining a motion to suspend the rules on that one, maybe? Alder Prophet makes a motion to suspend the rules, take these up with one rule call vote. Seconded by Alder Hankfuss. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, nay. The ayes have it, the rules are suspended. Motion to adopt made by Alder Prophet, seconded by Alder DeLee. Any discussion? Seeing none, we'll use the board.
You may vote. Yeah, it's an error saving, weird. Alder Grant?
Yes.
Alder DeLee?
Aye.
Alder Eck?
Yes.
Thank you. Alder Hankfuss?
Yes.
Thank you. You may disconnect.
All right, those ordinances are adopted unanimously. Onto the report of the INS committee. Motion to approve made by Alder Stevens, seconded by Alder Presley. Items here to be handled separately?
Seven.
Seven. Any others? Hearing none others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. The report is approved with the exception of item seven. Your wishes here?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Alder Galvin, seconded by Alder DeLee, who was pulled by Alder Galvin. You have the floor.
Thank you, your honor. For Director Grineer, and I, I apologize, I somehow missed this when I was reviewing the meetings, but we're talking about B, traffic, RRFB base installation. Is that, is this the contract for all the base installations? Okay. And it says to approve the request by Department of Public Works to award the following contracts at a staff level. I was just reminded by social media that on July 8th, I made an announcement that the city of Green Bay was going to be installing RRFBs July 8th of 2022, two years ago. And I'm just, we've talked several times. I thought these contracts were already out and the contractors, from our discussions, I thought the contractors were already online to start doing work as soon as they could. But am I understanding this that we still haven't put the contracts out for bid or awarded them?
This is the second time we're putting it out for bid. It was out for bid once, the project came in twice what we had the money to complete.
Okay.
So, we've re-scope that project.
Okay.
And it's back out for bid. The reason we're asking for approval to award it at a staff level is to be able to award that contract the instant it comes in and get the contractors online without having to wait for the next INS meeting and common council because we are on summer schedule.
Okay. And I, because I just found out, um, not through your office, but through a neighborhood association that we're going to be getting one installed on Bellevue where that lady was unfortunately killed last year. And I'm being told that it's going to be installed within the next couple of weeks?
Correct.
Correct? Okay. I, I, does this seem normal to you, two years from announcing that we're going to start doing it to get it done? Actually longer than that, because it may not get done till, what, the end of fall?
They should be this fall, yes.
And that's, that's all of them, is what we're looking at? There were sixty-seven?
Well, I hesitate to say all. There are a couple of locations that we have determined in consultation with Green Bay Water Utility, that we are in direct conflict with a water utility line and they are on streets that are anticipated to be in the reconstruct program for 2025. So, we will delay those until we tear the street up in 2025 so we don't have to do work over. So, I, I hesitate to say all, but I will say the vast majority are anticipated to be done this fall. We have all of the materials in-house, assembled and ready to go. We need to get the concrete bases installed. That's where the problem is.
Okay. So, when, when I get more calls from constituents, like especially this sort of school year, I'm starting to get calls already now where they are. I can tell them that by the end of fall, like the one on Webster Street or Monroe Street, you know, some of those other ones in my district, they'll be up by the end of fall.
That's the intent, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, there was a motion and a second. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it.
Aye.
Items approved. Report of the Protection Policy Committee. Motion to approve made by Alder Prophet.
Second.
Seconded by Alder Morgan. Uh, any items here to be handled separately?
I'd like to pull item 22.
Item 22. Any others? Hearing none others, all in favor of approving the remainder of that report, will signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. The report has been approved with the exception of item 22, and that's to approve General Ordinance 13-24, amending section 26-6 relating to firearms. Is there a motion there?
I, uh, I know there are several people here, especially from our veterans.
That would like to speak, so I'd like to make a motion first to open the floor.
All right, Alder Morgan makes a motion to open the floor, seconded by Alder Hankfuss. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay.
Aye.
The ayes have it. The floor is open. Um, and I do have a slip here for Ricky Young, uh, who'd like to speak. Feel free to approach the podium, state your name and address, and, uh, and we allow three minutes for public comment.
Thank you. My name's Ricky Young, 817 Hole Shoe Lane in Green Bay, and I'm with, uh, the American Legion Post 11. We do the, uh, honor guards, uh, for the funerals. Uh, our post also does the color guard for the Green Bay Packers since 1920 something or other. So, from the beginning, we've been doing that. Uh, we're having an issue with, uh, the proposed amendment to, uh, General Ordinance 13-24, amending the, uh, the firearm statute, requiring us to have, uh, written authorization from the chief of police to do, uh, the rifle volleys during the ceremonies for, uh, veterans' funerals. And in the past, uh, we've only, uh, done a phone call to the, uh, the dispatcher who's going to be sending the police cars out anyway. Uh, we give them a phone call, they, we tell them, uh, we're doing it or the funeral home or the church, the, the funeral director at the church or at the cemetery, wherever we're doing the honors, because do it wherever the family, uh, wants it. And they say yes or no. Uh, I've only seen one time where it was a, a no answer, uh, and that was last year during the, uh, Green Bay Christmas parade. And we were just going to be a couple of blocks away firing and that was, I think, within a year of the, the shootings at the parades somewhere else recently. So, that made total sense, even though the, uh, the funeral home recognized that issue and tried to get the family to change the time and date of the funeral. They, the family was steadfast on that. So, uh, we did the, the flag folding and playing taps only. So, uh, our concern is the turnaround time if this is amended as, as it's written here with the, uh, approval request. How long is it actually going to take? Sometimes we only get, uh, 24, 48-hour notice, uh, somebody drops the ball along the way to do this. So, we know that if we get a call on a Friday afternoon to do one Monday, that's probably not going to be approved if we have to do any sort of written thing. So, we're hoping that, uh, either this, uh, as, as it's written here in the, at the amended request, uh, be deleted altogether or that we, uh, allow it to, uh, continue with the phone call. And, uh, that, that's our, uh, big issue with that.
Okay.
And if, and if they say no, then we, we don't fire. But, uh, we, I've only seen one instance where the police actually showed up where, uh, it, you know, nobody made the call. But that's one of the first things we do when we show up at the funerals, is we find out who the next of kin is so we can give them the shell casings or the folded flag and where exactly the honor guard's going to be and stuff like that and was the city notified. And we've done them at schools, next to schools where churches are, have the school right next to it. And there've been times the kids actually come out and they're all standing there and they're saluting or hand over their heart and stuff like that, which is, which is pretty cool. But we always make sure that, you know, when we're next to a park, a city park, there's a bunch of kids there, we send somebody over to talk to the adults to make sure that they, they know that we're going to be firing, it's going to be loud, uh, that we're aimed off in a general direction towards trees and stuff like that. So, you know, we do it very, very safe, we're very conscientious about it, uh, but we've never had any issues with, uh, with anything. So, we're just hoping that, uh, you know, I wrote down a whole bunch of questions here, but, you know, why is this change needed? If it's to comply with something, then we request an amendment or an, uh, an exemption to it, you know? And, uh, biggest thing is how long would the approval process take if it stands as written?
Great.
Thank you.
All right, thanks so much for your, your input. Any questions for our guests? Alder Prophet?
Sorry, quick question. No, you're okay. You mentioned that you call right now. What phone number do you call, just out of curiosity?
It's the dispatch number.
Okay.
It's a, it's a dispatcher.
Okay, thank you.
Alder Galvin and then Alder Hutchinson?
Thank you, your honor, uh, and, and thank you for what you do and your organization for our veterans. I, I used to be the commander of the PD's honor guard and, uh, I know it takes a lot of dedication and work for, for you gentlemen and ladies to come out and, and honor, uh, our fallen veterans. Would you be willing to work with, um, the committee or the PD, um, who's ever got the concern to come up with a system that we could put, pen to paper, um, instead of just saying, let's just continue to do the phone call because you can see where that failed at one time? But something where someone knows, like in any kind of organization, it's this guy's job to do or this person's job to do and this is how they do it. Uh, the same thing with the PD, working out a timeline if, if, uh, written permission is needed for some reason, that there's systems in place, if the chief's not here, is designee, you know, and, and that these things will be done in a timely fashion. Because, uh, I, I can understand how someone wouldn't want their funeral for their loved one to be marred by the inability to give them the honor that, that they deserve, um, and the respect that they need. So, uh, would, would you or someone from your unit be willing to work with us?
Yeah, that, that wouldn't be a problem. And one suggestion we have is when we, we actually receive basically like a tasking order from, uh, the state funeral office for the Veterans Affairs, and it's an email and it has all the information, time, date, uh, pretty much the, almost the exact, within like 15, 20 minute time that we're going to be firing and where. We could forward that to an address, an email address at the police department so that they would know exactly, you know, so they would have a written record of when we're doing it also. So, but yeah, we would, that wouldn't be a problem. We would, uh, have somebody. And I'm not the color guard commander, but I do a lot of the work. The, the guy who's in charge is on, he's got medical issues, as most of us veterans do. So, he, so I'm standing in for him. But I also have my unit commander here and, uh, several other officers. And we've got, uh, VFW and other, other units are also here because it's not just our post that does it, it's several within, within here, so.
All right. And, and I'm not speaking for the rest of council, I don't know where this is going to go, but I just think that, you know, if we all work together, I think we can come up with a solution that'll please everybody.
Yeah, our biggest concern is that when we show up at a funeral and we say, sorry, we haven't had approval, we can't do the rifles.
Right.
And the families, why? That, I mean, that's a big thing.
Sure.
Tears, tears to eyes and stuff. If you've ever had to present the flag to the veteran's widow, it's, it's hard to spit everything out sometimes and, you know, get it right. But, uh, it, it's, it's very gratifying when we're doing it. So, we like to do, do everything correctly.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alder Hutchinson?
Thank you for your service and coming and testifying. From what you just said, it sounds like you would be, the notion of communicating verbally to the police department and receiving something back in terms of an email would be something that would be helpful or that you'd be in favor of, seeing how the timeframe would be a relatively quick turn?
Yeah, we, if, that would work for us if we could just send an email and we got a response back, yes, this is approved. Uh, absence of getting the approval in a timely manner, meaning basically the day of the funeral, uh, we would hope that, uh, a phone call would also suffice as a, because I know that when, and I've worked for the government for 38 years, federal government, paperwork gets lost, there's a whole bunch of administrative levels and the guy on the button a lot of time hasn't been properly briefed, he doesn't have the document in front of him. So, you know, we didn't call because we got the approval email and, you know, we could see this happening and then all of a sudden, of course, dispatch is called, 911's called, they're sending police cars, because that's what they should do whenever there's a shooting, you know, a reported shooting. So, they're going to show up anyway. So, you know, we would want to make sure that something like that doesn't happen.
Right. Okay. Um, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions? All right. Thanks so much for being here. Appreciate it. All right, anyone else who'd like to speak? All right. Entertaining a motion to close the floor? Motion to close the floor made by Alder Stevens, seconded by Alder Prophet. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. And the floor is closed.
There was one more that wanted to talk.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead, sir.
Have a hard time getting up. My name's Bill Casmeric, I'm the post commander at, uh, Post 11, American Legion. I'm also a member of the VVA and I'm also a member of the, uh, VFW. Uh, all of these units do this stuff. So, I would, speaking for the post, your comment about working on a team or with the, with the committee is something that we can do. That would, that would make it easier. I think that, uh, and that would show good faith both ways. So, um, we can, we can do it that way. Uh, I don't have a problem with that. I, one of my people will, or somebody in the veteran community will stand up and do that. But, uh, we just have to have contact people and all that stuff. I think it's a, I agree with what Ricky has said. I, I agree a hundred percent because we had a system that worked. We don't understand why the changes become necessary and it was never explained to us or made clear to us why that change was made. So, that's, that's what I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Did we get his address? Uh, your address, sir?
Oh, 2694 Finger Road.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak?
Okay, I'm Leon Gazella with Green Bay VFW in Ashwabanon. What I'd like to do is to show you.
Just your address, address, sir?
Address, 1131 Cormier Road. Show you what we do. Brown County. I call them.
You have reached the Brown County Public Safety non-emergency line. If this is a life-threatening emergency or possible crime in progress, please.
Then I hit eight because I know what it is.
Please hold while I transfer your call.
Brown County Public Safety, this is Heather.
Yes, this is Leon Gazella with the VFW. I'm at a council meeting. This is just a test to show them what we do so you don't have to do anything. I'm just letting them know. Got that?
Did you, did you need any?
No, I have, I don't need, no. This is, this is a test.
Okay.
I need nothing.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, fine.
Okay, that's what we do, simple. They say yes, ask where it is, uh, what time, and it's pretty much, they'll say we'll put the report out to the squad cars, done deal. So, it's very simple what we do now. If we got to get paperwork, it's going to be a, kind of a headache. But anyway, this is what we do. I wanted to show you and I think this works perfect. I've been doing it for 15 years, so it works.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anything else? All right. Entertaining a motion. Make sure we have, yeah, motion to close the floor made by Alder Prophet, seconded by Alder Stevens. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. The ayes have it. Um, just real quick, I don't think anybody wants to do committee work at council. I think there's consensus that, you know, could go back and, and, um, you know, take I think there's consensus that, you know, could go back and, you know, take in some tweaks. But if Attorney Bungert just wants to explain to the council and to our guests why this is before us, and then maybe go to Chief Davis for some ideas.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. So our current ordinance generally prohibits the discharge of firearms within the city. And we, I want to say a couple weeks ago, got a request from our Parks Department to review a request they received to have a ceremonial discharge for a funeral and to find out how exactly, you know, we can allow for something like that to happen. So when we were reviewing our ordinance, we realized that there is a list of exceptions for when firearms can be discharged within the city, but for ceremonial purposes, it was not listed. So we felt that. And then in conversation and discussions with PD, it became aware that that is a request that they do frequently review and allow for, but it wasn't codified in our ordinance. So we just wanted to make sure that it was there so that if there were any questions in the future, or there are any, you know, leadership changes in PD and, you know, in the future, that it was consistent with what our practices are currently. So that is the nexus of why this came to be.
Great. And Chief Davis?
Yeah, thank you. The other issue is when you call the non-emergency number like you just did, you're getting Brown County, and so you're not actually getting the city's authorization from a dispatcher employed by the county. I think, you know, and one suggestion that could help for tonight is if we wanted to amend this resolution to say the chief of police were designee, I think we could work with all of our partners and the military community to come up with a system that works. I'm envisioning one that would comply with the terms of the ordinance if we just added a designee to the chief, where you would still just call a telephone number, we would just have you call our shift commander's phone number, which is their on-duty twenty-four-seven-two, and then we give them instructions for how to send you an email that says, per our conversation on the phone, your ceremonial discharge is authorized and you're good to go. And then that written record is still preserved in case somebody comes along and accuses you of doing one of these without proper authorization. You've got proof, we've got proof, and that's just as fast as calling dispatch.
Okay. Thanks, Chief. Attorney Bungert?
Yes, thank you. So based on the chief's comments, I would also recommend perhaps just striking out the word written so that if PD does have a process by which they do, and by policy and procedure, have a, you know, a record of that approval, the request itself doesn't have to come in via writing, just that a request comes in. So there's no specification as to the form of the request. So I would suggest that change as well.
Okay. Great. Any other questions or comments from council? Alder Prophet?
Yeah, I was just going to briefly ask. I know we've talked extensively recently about requests for service. There is a category for police services. Would it be feasible to just add an option, once this ordinance is approved, to just add that, and then they can just submit that request and then get a response in a timely fashion?
Chief Davis?
I think we would, you know, we would certainly honor one of those if it came in through the request for service. The problem might be the timeliness, because if they're getting notified on a Friday afternoon of one of these events, we may not get to that off of the request for service tab in time. So I would still want to maintain some telephone number to an on-duty person that they could get what they need.
Any other comments, questions? And we want to refer, Alder Morgan?
I was just going to say- Hey, I'm kind of in the line with Alderman Galvin. I think our next PNP meeting is August nineteenth, so it's like three and a half weeks away. I would make a motion, we refer this back to committee and have the discussion, including our law enforcement, our dispatch, and not only the gentlemen that give all their free time to do this, but also the funeral homes that are involved, and come up with something at that point. So that's my motion.
All right. Alder Morgan-
Second.
Makes a motion to refer that item back, seconded by Alder Galvin. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay.
Aye.
The ayes have it, and that item is referred back. Appreciate all the attendance. I think as you could tell, there's certainly no intent among our council or coming from me to interfere at all with the way that you honor our fallen veterans, so looking forward to working that through with you all. So thanks for being here. Next, report of the Protection Policy Committee granting operator licenses.
Motion to approve made by Alder Prophet, seconded by Alder Stevens. Any abstentions or names to be handled separately? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay.
Aye.
That report has been approved. Report of the Plan Commission? Motion to approve made by Alder Stevens, seconded by Alder Presley. Items here to be handled separately? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay.
Aye.
The ayes have it, that report has been approved. Finance Committee? Motion to approve made by Alder Prophet, seconded by Alder DeLee. Any items here to be handled separately?
Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it, that report has been approved. Park Committee?
Motion to approve made by Alder Prophet, seconded by Alder Hankfuss. Items here to be handled separately? Hearing none, all in favor, will say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it, that report has been approved. Report of the Personnel Committee? Motion to approve made by Alder Presley, seconded by Alder DeLee. Items here to be handled separately? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it, and that report has been approved. Report of the Public Arts Commission?
Motion to approve made by Alder Prophet, seconded by Alder Hankfuss. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it, that report has been approved. Report of the Traffic Bicycle Pedestrian Commission?
Motion to approve made by Alder Prophet, seconded by Alder Stevens. Items here to be handled separately? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it, that report has been approved. Sustainability Commission? Motion to approve made by Alder Presley, seconded by Alder DeLee. Items here to be handled separately? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it, that report has been approved. Report of the Equal Rights Commission? Motion to approve made by Alder Presley, seconded by Alder Hankfuss. Items here to be handled separately? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. The ayes have it, and that report has been approved. Next, we have Committee of the Whole for consideration of possible action to approve retaining outside counsel to provide litigation support and consultation services to the Law Department regarding election law. And with that, we'll go to Attorney Bungert to set the stage.
Yes, thank you. So as I indicated in my email, the purpose of retaining outside counsel is essentially to ensure that we don't fall behind with our workload. Twenty-twenty showed us that election litigation can be very protracted, very complex, and it pretty much halted all other business for the staff in the department. It was all hands on deck. So to be better prepared for this election season, especially in light of all the different legal decisions that have come down through the pikes or the pipes, it will be tremendously helpful for us to have an additional resource to be able to kind of shift that workload and those burdens. So typically, I do not seek counsel approval to retain outside counsel. That's something that is afforded to me, a discretionary power that I have under the statutes. However, in this case, I bring it before you for two reasons. One, elections are very important and have been very important to this council. And two, there could be a budgetary impact. This isn't professional service that I had budgeted or anticipated in my budget. At this point, I still do have funding for litigation costs, but if I do retain counsel that is not on a pro bono basis and does bill, I may run through that fairly quickly and would have to be coming before you for a contingency request. So I thought it more prudent to be transparent as to what my plans were and what, you know, my anticipations were for the rest of the year with my budget and what I was seeing the workload landscape to be. And so that's why I am here to kind of receive that preemptive approval for retention of professional services.
Great. And thanks, Attorney Bungert. We do have closed session language on here, but it's your opinion that we can-
Right. Unless we start discussing specific legal strategy, I didn't see any issue with discussing this in open session.
Okay. Great. Questions for Attorney Bungert? Aliree?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Attorney Bungert. We had an email flurry going back and forth, and I appreciate you're always very-
We did. Sure.
Quick to respond.
Absolutely.
In your explanation, at least to us, you listed some that would be considered. Who are they?
So the firms that we are considering are, which we've had experience and relationships with representation before, are Law Forward and States United. They have represented, they represented us previously in the last election cycle and did phenomenal work and gave us excellent results. And they are offering to do it on a pro bono basis. So from a fiscally conservative perspective, it's, that's kind of a great deal for the city. As, you know, as you all are familiar, litigation can be very, very costly. The other firm that I am recommending is Stafford Rosenbaum. We also have representation agreements with them in the past. They are an approved provider for our civil litigation cases through CivMec. However, they would not be able to do it on a pro bono basis, but we do have, we would have a fee agreement in place, so we would know what those hourly rates are. And the reason I want to have a couple in the mix is because while Law Forward and States United can agree to a representation agreement where they're giving us consultation services, you know, as needed on an ongoing basis, if litigation pops up, they may not be able to represent us because of a conflict or because of capacity issues, because they just don't have the time or the resources to handle it. So then I would be able to retain Stafford Rosenbaum on an expedited fashion. A lot of times with election litigation matters, things pop up very quickly, like an injunction per se, where within forty-eight hours or sometimes less, we have to be in front of a judge. So having a couple options to go to is helpful, and these are both organizations that have extensive experience in election law, specifically Wisconsin election law, and because we've had prior relationships with them, I thought that they both would be a good fit.
Appreciate that.
Sure.
I did offer up two other groups, the Wisconsin Institute of Law and Liberty and Wisconsin Voter Alliance.
Sure. So as I indicated to you, Wisconsin Voter Alliance isn't necessarily a law firm that would be able to represent us. And while Wisconsin Institute for Law and Liberty is a firm, I believe there would be a conflict of interest, as both of those organizations have brought actions against us and represented individuals in suits against us as well.
Have we ever hired outside legal counsel from people who in their firm have sued us in any other matter in the city?
Not that I'm aware of. No, not that I'm aware of. Typically, if they've represented clients that have been adverse to us, that firm would be prevented from taking us on as a client.
So you're not necessarily commenting on their qualifications? You're including them based on-
No, no. Correct. Nope, just on the fact that, well, one is not a firm, and they both, even if hypothetically they were a firm, they would be adverse to us, or at least have historically been, so.
And I definitely understand, you know, the familiarity we've had with Stafford Rosenbaum and Law Forward, those two are kind of co-mingled, a lot of their parts are similar, right?
Right. They worked together in the previous election cycle and offering our legal services. So previously, it was Law Forward with States United and Stafford Rosenbaum. But in this instance, they would not be working together. Stafford Rosenbaum would be a separate representation.
Did we try, you know, with all the issues that have been going on around the country and specifically here in the last couple of years, right? Did we try to maybe reach out to someone we haven't used before who might be more, I would say neutral, and it's hard to find in these days, but, you know, just a quick, even just, you know, a Google search of Influence Watch website, you'll see that the groups you listed are all left of center.
Sure.
And you can see where you're almost inviting division right away.
I see your point, Alder. To reiterate, when I do my review or start looking into the selection of outside counsel, I purely go based on expertise, cost, and best, whether that firm is best suited to represent the needs of the city. And so those are the only things I look at. Looking at anything else, I think, would be irresponsible professionally and ethically. And so while I understand your feelings and your viewpoints on the organizations, those were not things that I factored into my review at all.
All right. And the budget line item would be Law Department, not-
It would be Law Department, correct. And I currently have funding, but again, I don't want to be coming at the back end and asking for a contingency request without having reviewed all this with you, because this wasn't something that was specifically anticipated. Like I had mentioned in my email, we did have outside, or Assistant City Attorney that was dedicated to outside litigation, which was created kind of as a result of the twenty-twenty elections and the amount of litigation that we had, because that was so much workload that came on. And she was also our dedicated election law specialist. She has moved on to another opportunity. So that in combination with knowing how much, how much we were overwhelmed with the amount of work that came on a few years ago, this is kind of a perfect storm in being able to get on this additional assistance.
I probably have a few more questions, but I'll see if anybody else has for a sec.
Any other questions? Alder Galvin and Alder Hankfuss?
Thank you, Your Honor. Attorney Bungert, if we go with either one of these firms, are they only if someone files litigation against the city?
So that's a good question. So Law Forward and States United would provide us consultation services. So if a issue arises or a question arises from the clerk as to compliance or how this new court opinion applies to a situation that's arising, if we feel that we need additional expertise or help or consultation or research on this, that we don't have the time and capability of doing, I will be able to reach out to Law Forward for consultation advice.
Okay.
And as to the litigation, that'll be on a case-by-case basis. Again, both firms would be available, we would be able to present the ability to represent us, and then they would have to do a conflicts check and see whether they can take on that litigation.
Okay. What about if Citizen A is observing our early voting process and has, or believe they have an issue with what we're doing, and they file a complaint with the clerk's office? Would this necessarily go to either one of those law firms? Would our law office try to handle it first?
We will always be first, first in line, and I would be utilizing these firms as kind of backup. So in that particular situation, if there was a complaint given to the clerk, the clerk would come to my office for advice and consultation on how to handle it. And if we feel that the expertise and capacity of Law Forward or Stafford Rosenbaum for that matter, then I would be able to rely on them for that assistance. But I would be managing the representation throughout.
Okay. And Law Forward would be pro bono, no matter what?
Correct. That, well, at this point, they, yeah, they are presenting a representation agreement that would be pro bono for the consultation services. And that is my understanding. It would also be on a pro bono basis for litigation, but that would be determined on a case-by-case basis.
Okay. Any other firm would charge us?
Yes. So Stafford Rosenbaum does have a tiered hourly rate, which is within kind of our billing policies and procedures, so nothing out of the ordinary, ranging from three hundred to a hundred dollars an hour, depending on the staff person that's performing the work, whether a partner, an associate, or a paralegal.
If another law firm presented itself to you-
Mm-hmm.
-and said, we would go with the same tiered hourly rate of this other firm-
Mm-hmm.
-but if you look at our political leanings, we're central, centrist, or right of center, would the city entertain hiring them?
So like I said before, I wouldn't have that discussion, because it wouldn't be, it's an inconsequential factor. I would have a discussion as to what the rates are. I would review what their areas of specialty are. I would see how many court cases they've handled, how many Wisconsin Supreme Court cases they've handled, what the results of those cases have been. If they have represented other municipalities, I would likely reach out to those municipalities and find out how the representation and working relationship was. Those would be the things that I would ask about. In addition, we would also have to look to see if there would be any conflict issues.
Okay. So if, let's take, and I'm not trying to what-if you to death, but I guess I'm trying to get rid of all the stuff that's going to be coming out of this.
Right.
Because I see a letter already that's been sent to us this afternoon from a law firm representing someone from the Republican Party.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, here it starts already with all the clutter and stuff that's going to tie up our time and our staff's time, so I'm just trying to get this out there now.
Sure.
If another firm came to us and said, we do it like Law Forward, pro bono, and you checked and they've got all the same kind of experience that Law Forward has, would we consider hiring them?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't close out that possibility. I would take it into- I wouldn't, I wouldn't close out that possibility. I would take it into consideration, yes. If all things are equal, and really equal, and it's apples to apples, absolutely, yes.
All right, because I think every lawyer takes an oath of office to follow the law, right? And regardless of what their politics are or who they support, if they follow that oath, you know, I believe we have to listen and follow their advice, especially if we've hired them. You know, we can't just disregard them. And I would hope any law firm that we've hired in the past, you know, we've never checked to see what their political leanings were. Okay, and I think I've brought this up before. We've hired firms to represent us with litigation with the tribe. And I think we went checking to see how their past history of their members were with the tribes or anything else like that. You know, you don't ask a cop if he's a Republican or a Democrat if you're about to go do something wrong in front of them. And it's the same thing here when we're hiring people. I understand some of the concern, but this is a group of individuals that have taken an oath of office and put their reputation on the line when they do their job. And I think if the Law Department has done due diligence, if they've worked for us in the past and we've been happy with the work they've done, and I don't know if anyone's, I haven't ever heard of any complaints from anybody on either side of the line about the work they've done for us in the past, I think we have to give serious consideration to these, either one of these firms. Thank you.
Alder Hinkfus?
I'm glad we're looking to get ahead of this this time. As far as the consideration, are we, is the, are we being asked to approve the firms or just approve the fact that we are going to hire outside counsel?
Good question. Attorney Bungert?
So that would be the latter. So the request to actually retain and execute what is a professional services agreement, it's not something, like I said, I budgeted for. I can cover it at the start, but it could potentially result in a contingency request. So it's the approval of just outside counsel, not the firm-specific.
Okay, thank you. And then for budgetary reasons, that will come back if necessary.
If necessary, right, I would still have to come back, but at that point, it won't be a novel issue for you. You'll understand why.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Alder Morgan, then Alder Grant?
We mentioned that our main concern with the ones that Alder Manwery has mentioned was conflict of interest. And we're seeing here in this, letters we're getting, that there is case study and stuff showing that the two you've mentioned have represented one party nationally in different things, and some of their attorneys have been in litigation with other lawsuits. Those have taken the same oath as the ones that you're considering. Do you feel this is a conflict too, a little bit, that could come up in the future for us?
I'm not sure I understand the question. I haven't received this correspondence that you're noting, so I don't know what is being alleged.
Apparently, both Law Forward and Stafford Rosenbaum have represented a political party's national committee. They've represented individuals that have been sued by national committees and commissions. Do you feel, you know, that that's kind of a conflict too?
That's not a legal conflict. So I think what you're speaking of is conflict of political views, which that is not what I'm considering. When I say a legal conflict is where, for example, Law Forward and States United has never sued us, nor can they, because we have been a client of theirs. So they could never bring a suit against us unless we waived that conflict. And so the firms that, well, the organization and the firm that Alder Manwery mentioned have brought suits against us and represented individuals in suing us. Wisconsin Institute of Law and Liberty has brought other civil litigation matters against us beyond election law. One of the first ones, I think it was my second or third year, so about seven years ago. So they have been a firm that has been bringing actions against the city for quite some time. So that is what I speak of, is a legal conflict, because they have represented individuals with adverse interests to the city.
Now, with the referendum that was passed, I believe April, where it said it is the responsibility of our clerk and everyone to do that, if someone assumes that there is a conflict with something like that, are we opening ourselves as councilmen to litigation? If someone would file saying that we hired someone that didn't represent bipartisan, both parties?
So I think you're referencing the constitutional amendment, right?
Yes, the Wisconsin's constitutional.
So that prevents us from receiving donations or funding from partisan or non-governmental entities in actually administering the election. The Attorney General has recently applied, opined that that definition of election officials and administering the election is very limited to just the clerk and the clerk's designated needs and poll workers. So I'm not considered an election official. I'm the legal advisor to an election official. So we provide guidance and advice and represent in legal actions. And that is exactly what these firms would be doing per my direction and per my management.
Thank you.
Alder Grant?
Thank you, Attorney Bungert. You mentioned how you did your research and looked up all the qualifications. How did the, I guess, were there bids? How did the cost discussions start?
It was essentially based on our prior relationships and knowing that they had election divisions and knowing their litigation history and their representation history, I reached out to them and provided them a scope of work of essentially what we were looking for. That's kind of typical practice in professional services when we know that there's a group of survey companies or architects. Depending on the amount of the contract, right, sometimes we do RFP pursuant to procurement policies. But for professional services, competitive bidding isn't required, particularly when the scope of work is kind of broad. So we're not doing an RFP for a particular project or an RFP to help with a particular contract, where I was basically seeking representation kind of on a retainer basis to be available to provide assistance, support, and consultation as requested.
Okay. Since Stafford is possibly charging us, sorry, Stafford and Rosenbaum, do we see it useful to get a few quotes if they are actually charging us and they're not completely pro bono?
We could. Their rates are very typical and very reasonable. And I could potentially get additional quotes. I guess that answers the question. But, I mean, what they provided is exactly what we were looking for. And there aren't that many firms that handle election litigation and have practice groups in elections that have the experience too that Stafford has, as well as Law Forward, so.
Okay, because I think just, you know, with trying to remain neutral and fair, that that might not be a bad idea just for the public and for people to see those options and to make sure we did fully our due diligence. I don't know if there is any more questions, but I do see that there was someone in the audience that wanted to speak. So I don't know if I, am I okay to motion open the floor right now, or does anybody else have a question? Okay, a motion to open the floor?
Alder Grant makes a motion to open the floor, seconded by Alder Hinkfus. All in favor, say aye. Posnay, the ayes have it, the floor is open. If there's anyone in the gallery who'd like to speak?
Hi, Ryan Hatch, 119 Christie Lane, DePere. So I loved the Packers being here tonight. It was so cool to hear them proposing their stadium stuff. Imagine, though, at the next Packer Bear game, our biggest rivals are coming to town. You and your friends pack your coolers, you get ready, you head out, you tailgate for a couple hours, grillin' brats, talking to your friends about what the game's going to be like, talking about players, talking smack, right? It's how we roll. Packers start off well in the game, and then you see one bad call and another bad call. And pretty soon, the Bears are way ahead, and you know the crowd's getting frustrated because these referees are not playing fair. What if you found out that the Bears not only are getting the favorable calls because they deserve it? What if you found out that the NFL referees were actually being paid by the Bears? Would that not outrage you? Is that fair? Judging must be neutral, right? For winning to mean anything, it has to be fair. It has to be. Now, I know we're talking about, this isn't political, this is legal. I don't buy it. Don't buy it for a minute with all the stuff that happened in the last election. Don't buy that. The road to the White House goes through Wisconsin, and Green Bay's a big part of that. Now, with all due respect to the attorney here, you could make this decision by yourself, but you're not. You're coming here and you picked the firms. You didn't do a quote. You picked the firms and you're bringing it here. You could make the decision, but you're bringing it here so the blood's on their hands, so it's not on you. That's not, I don't think that's right. Trust is eroding in the country. You know that. All of us know that. It's too divisive. This isn't what we need. We don't need more of that. I urge you, this isn't about left or right, whether Kamala wins or Trump wins, whatever, okay? This isn't about that. This is about right and wrong. And I urge you to be above approach, to restore trust in our election system. This is a really big deal. This is a big, big deal. This isn't a small deal about who I'll talk to. It's bigger than that. I encourage you to ensure fairness, refuse partiality, let Jeffries run the election unencumbered by external legal counsel, and reject this proposal, because I think it's biased. I don't think it's right. Thank you.
Thanks, Your Honor. Any questions? Thank you. Motion to close the floor? Motion to close the floor made by Alder Prophet, seconded by Alder Stevens. All in favor, say aye. Posnay, the ayes have it, the floor is closed. Any additional comments from counsel? Alder Manwery for a second time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I remember the last term, former counsel President Burnett had brought up the funding mechanisms for some of these groups, and it really was, never was answered. Did we ever find out anymore about that?
No, I don't think so. Again, I don't, no, I don't think so. The funding mechanisms do not impact the representation. When an attorney is hired to represent you, regardless of payment, source of payment, how they're doing it, if they're doing it in pro bono and taking it at a loss, they have a duty to zealously advocate for their client and represent only their client's interests, and the client is king. I believe I've said that, or queen, for that matter. So attorneys don't lead the way. They assist and they execute the wishes and intentions of the client. And that is what has happened previously, and that is my intention for how this will be run. A big clarification that I want to make sure is clear for everyone, this is not legal counsel for the clerk in executing her duties. This is basically additional assistance for my office. I ultimately still am responsible for all the legal decisions that are made on behalf of the city.
Thank you. But it is help for you to help the clerk in election matters. It's in election matters.
I don't, I don't help her do the election. I'm not an election worker.
Guidance on how to run it legally.
I don't tell her how to run it. I provide her guidance as to what the law requires, whether things are required under state statutes. I will tell her whether they are required. But the administration of the election is solely, unequivocally, within the clerk's power.
Wordsmithing and word game are always fun.
Alder, with all due respect, like to insinuate that I'm somehow controlling how...
I appreciate your, I thank you. Thank you. I appreciate your comments, and I'm just saying that...
And if you're asking me a question, I would like to finish, I would like to finish...
I'm happy with your answer. I'm content with your answer.
And the comment is that I am not...
I don't, my question is done. I'm fine.
Alder Galvin?
Alder Manwery asked a question. Attorney Bungert is trying to answer it.
I got my answer.
And she's still trying to finish her answer.
Filibuster.
I think, I think due respect to her position and the fact that you questioned.
Filibuster away.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes?
She has more. I still have the floor, but I thought she had more to add.
Attorney Bungert?
Thank you. As I was trying to explain and clarify, I don't tell any of the directors of how to do their jobs or what to do. I provide them guidance and I answer their questions. But ultimately, how they do their jobs is entirely up to them, because they are the professionals that are hired to execute those jobs. And that is the exact same way that my relationship is with the clerk.
All right, thank you. I still have the floor, unless you have a point of order again. All right. I mean, a lot of legalese is gray, especially when we have questions on how things are to be interpreted. That's gray. I know I've had attorneys from the city. When I asked them for an opinion, asked me, "What do you want it to be?" So that tells me there's wiggle room everywhere. And with that being the case, within that wiggle room, where's the starting point going to be? Are you coming from here, or are you coming from here on your opinion? That matters. That forms your basis for your opinion. You know, you can see why there's such a concern. Free legal help from a partisan group and who funds them is a concern. You can talk it down all you want. We've gone down this path before. I'm not going to. I'm going to be voting no. I'm not going to lose any kind of immunity over this or be roped into any decision. So I'm going to make a motion to receive this and place on file.
All right, Alder Manwery makes a motion to receive and place on file. Seconded by Alder Morgan. Discussion of that motion. Alder Hutchinson?
I'm a little concerned with this wiggle room issue. Being a civil engineer, there is laws, there's equations, there's things you got to follow. And the further you get away from the actual truth of what is meant, be it how something's designed or whatever, the more you are exposing yourself to failure. So I think in law, the further you get from the truth of what the law is, the more you're exposing yourself to failure. Now, you may call it wiggle room, but I see the need to have instant or nearly instant information during this voting process because of the laws that have been created by a political party to make it difficult to vote. That's what's causing this, okay? Should I explain it to you? But, so I think having the process where we have people retained, regardless of their affiliation, if they know Wisconsin law and they can give us good advice, makes really good sense, because things will be done correctly and on time. And to not make use of this is kind of a failure of what we were hired to do. So that's why I'm going to vote against that motion.
Thanks, Alder. Other comments? Alder Prophet, then Alder Dewey on the motion?
I'm also against that motion. What I see before us tonight is our legal department trying to get ahead of an unfortunate situation where we've lost our Assistant City Attorney in the past few weeks. I know because I was at her going-away party and had delicious cake, so I appreciate the city for providing that to her. We would be remiss to not seek additional counsel, or, yeah, counsel to support what may happen. We are two weeks roughly away from an election, as was alluded to prior in earlier discussions from the mayor's report, and we are down an Assistant City Attorney. It is imperative that we are proactive in this approach, so I am against a receive and place on file motion.
Alder Dewey?
Yeah, what we're voting on here is the action to retain outside counsel. We're not, we're not voting on the specific law, the lawyers. So at this time, I wouldn't approve the receive and place on file, but if we wanted to make an amendment... if we wanted to make an amendment to the motion and consider other, other legal departments than, than the ones that have been chosen or suggested, I think we could do that. But I'm against the receive and place on file.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments on the motion? Alder Grant?
I, I do.
Alder Eck, go ahead. And then Alder Grant.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. So I just, I just wanted to read something that is on the Law Forward website just to kind of give an idea of why there's the thought of, they say nonpartisan, but it doesn't come off as that. So there's where the concern is. It, it just talks up where, under, about us. Our co-founders Jeff Mandell and Doug Poland had the idea of a progressive organization that would defend Wisconsin from white, right wing attacks and grow our state's proud progressive traditions. Their vision is to build an organization that stands up to the minority rule being propped up by legislative leadership and fight back against a systematic effort to undercut democratic norms and disenfranchise voters as a reality today. At the, at its core, Law Forward exists to protect democracy. And the mission started with redistricting litigation and a public education campaign. An effort led by Law Forward's original staff attorney Mel Barnes, who now serves as Governor Tony Evers' chief legal counsel. And, you know, it goes on. But I, I think that gives you an idea of why it seems to be left-leaning. Or not, it's partisan. So there's, there's concerns there. And I'm not sure, I know Alder Dewey said it wasn't necessarily the specific, but those were the ones listed by Attorney Bungert as suggested.
Thanks, Alder. On that type of discussion, Attorney Bungert, just guidance?
Yes, I, I do want to encourage to not discuss the First Amendment exercises of, of any vendor or service provider that comes before counsel. We, we don't do it for contractors. We don't do it for architects. We shouldn't do that at all. Qualifications, expertise, that is what is, is, is what is being reviewed by me. And that is what is important to me. As, as the city attorney charged with representing the city in all legal business.
Thanks, Alder Grant. On the motion?
Thank you. I do think a lot of eyes are on Green Bay. We have a history here. We've been in the headlines nationally and locally. And we have an opportunity right now to go into this election neutral. And I don't believe us choosing these firms that are publicly known as partisan. How are we telling our residents to believe in this election if we're going to start it out this way? If we can't agree to place this on file, then I would absolutely encourage us to wait and allow time for other law firms to give us quotes and really evaluate all options. Thank you.
Thanks, Alder. We have a motion to receive and place on file. Any further discussion on that? Alder Galvin and then Hinkfuss?
Thank you, Your Honor.
How deep do we go then? For all of you that don't want us to hire the, either of these law firms because they have told people what they believe politically? We're supposed to hold that against them? So every firm that comes before this counsel, you're going to go and look at their social media pages. You're going to go check in their hometowns, talk to their neighbors, see what churches they go to. See what organizations they belong to. Because this is what we're being asked to base our judgment on.
Alder Weary, what's your point of order?
People we hire to give legal advice are lawyers, not engineers or anyone else's firm that we might deal with.
That's not a point of order.
It is. He made a statement and I'm correcting him that, why would we look at that? They're not giving us legal advice.
State your point of order.
I just did.
Well, I, I'm talking about, so any law firm that we're going to look at, that's what we're going to do with those lawyers? We're going to check them out? See what their political affiliations are? See if they're registered as a Republican or Democrat and if they've registered as either one, we can't hire them? I mean, how ridiculous are we going to get with this?
Alder Weary. Alder Galvin has the floor. Alder Galvin has the floor.
It's not, you're out of
Alder Weary, you're out of order.
And so that's what I'm asking. I'm asking. So is this what we're going to do? Are we going to get crazy? Are we going to examine the political leanings of every lawyer and law firm that we bring here to hire? I don't think you're going to find that. And that's why I'm not in favor of this. Thank you.
Alder Hinkfuss?
This started because Joanne's trying to make sure that she has the appropriate staff in the legal area. Also, when we're working with many of the other directors of the area, they select people that they have worked with, that they trust, that they know, I would say, are upstanding. So I just don't understand why we're questioning if these are the people that Joanne's worked with before, they've given the city great advice, then those are the people that we should go with. Period. I mean, because it's not up to us to approve who that is. It's up to Joanne to hire. And a lawyer interprets the law. They have to follow the law. So whichever attorney it is, whatever we're asking them to do, they have to apply the law.
Thanks, Alder. Any other comments on the motion? Seeing none? Alder Morgan?
I was just going to say for interpretation, I would hope we're doing our diligence and checking out people working for them. Like I, general manager of a sports team, I have a contract with the city of Green Bay to use their park. I would hope that if I was in negotiation and you needed some law advice, you wouldn't be hiring someone that's going to be giving advice that's going to go against you. So I think on this, I, I do hope we are doing our diligence in doing the background checks that are needed. And mainly because I don't want to go and talk to all my constituents and the first thing out of them is, is this fixed or not? And that's it.
Okay. On receiving place on file, Alder Presley?
Yeah, I just want to say, I mean, it is my understanding that this is, we can't evaluate, or Attorney Bungert can't evaluate the political leanings. That's just not something she can put into her calculus when determining who to hire for counsel. So my decision to not receive this in place on file and put the, the ability to hire outside counsel with Attorney Bungert is based on the fact that I don't think we should be talking about political affiliation of these organizations because it's not something she can ethically or legally consider at all. And so, yeah, that's, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thanks, Alder Presley. A request was made for a board vote by Alder Weary. So the motion is to receive and place on file. And we will use the board.
You may vote. Alder Hinkfuss? And then Alder Eck?
Yes.
You may just fly.
That motion to receive and place on file fails. Entertaining
For approving the purse strings, we can put reasons behind it in that and as mentioned here.
Alder Weary, I think we customarily need a date. Alder Weary makes a motion to hold this item until the next meeting, requesting
Just open it up publicly that, hey, we are looking for other options. You know, maybe, and they could be weighed equally, or maybe we want to have two from perhaps differing viewpoints who could give us an opinion so that we can judge what we think is right.
Thanks, Alder. Is there a second for that? Seconded by Alder Morgan. Attorney Bungert on that motion?
Yes, timing of it is problematic. We have a primary coming up in a couple of weeks. And I'm down on attorney. Ultimately, comes down and I have to hire somebody because we can't handle it. I'm going to have to hire somebody. Second, I'm not going to be changing the scope of work to be reviewing the legal or the political leanings of any firm. If you'd like me to expand the, I guess, portfolio of potential law firms, I can certainly do that. And that doesn't have to come back before counsel. Essentially, it's either approving potential expenditure or not. If you are not approving the potential expenditure, I will just have to remain within my budget. And will not, I mean, and then potentially take a risk of going for contingency. But if the will of this commi, of this council is to not approve additional funding to, to allow my office to select outside counsel that we feel is best to represent the city, which I'm statutorily required to do as part of my job, then, then we'll just remain within our budget.
Thanks, attorney. So there was a motion and a second to hold this item until the next meeting, entertaining additional options, I guess. Any further discussion on that? Alder Presley?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a question for Attorney Bungert then. So if we do not give you authorization to have the extra funds for hiring outside counsel, then it's likely you would end up going with a pro bono option if you had the stress and needed to get outside counsel anyway, correct? We're not precluding you from doing that.
Right. I'm not aware of any other firm in Wisconsin that would be able to do this pro bono. If there are other firms, happy to, to receive those requests and we could consider them. But my understanding is that Law Forward and States United are the only ones that, that can do this on a pro bono basis. So from a fiscally responsible perspective, I, I, that would obviously be the first choice. And then it would tier down. And also, it's also going to be, as far as litigation response, it's also going to depend on, again, conflicts and capacity issues. If I'm in a situation where Stafford is not available or Law Forward is not available, I'll have to branch out. But at least then I have two that I know that they understand what we need, we understand what they can provide, and it can the, the relationship and the representation can happen almost immediately. And another important point is that ultimately I am making the decisions on behalf of the city in consultation with other resources, which is other attorneys, my staff and other assistant city attorneys. So whatever advice is being provided, is not necessarily the direction that ultimately I will decide. It's just a, a resource to provide guidance. They're not taking over my position, essentially. I still exist.
Thanks, attorney. Alder Weary for a second time on your motion.
Do have a question regarding Attorney Bungert. You had mentioned if they're from Wisconsin, is that a qualification?
No, national firms are, are fine. But I would, I wouldn't want to utilize a firm that's not vetted in Wisconsin election law. It's very, very nuanced and very specific to the state. So that there are plenty of firms that have national offices, but they have attorneys that are licensed to practice in, in the state of Wisconsin. That's going to be a necessity. Someone that is local is very important. Again, I said sometimes litigation responses are very quick. And we need someone to be here across the street at the, at the courthouse the next morning. So that, that's a huge consideration.
I appreciate it. And this will help if this is held for word to get out there for people to maybe apply to your office. Because I know States United is based out of DC. I have no idea if they have people in Wisconsin, but they're not based in Wisconsin. They're out of DC.
Right. That's why they're partnered with Law Forward who's in Wisconsin.
I'm just saying there's options out there. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Alder. So this motion is to hold to the next meeting. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? It appears the nays have it. Board vote? Board vote.
Okay. And you may vote. Alder Eck?
Yes.
That fails.
And that fails six to five? So is there a motion, Attorney Bungert, that you would recommend? Or is it necessary or what kind of language?
A motion to approve retaining outside counsel.
Okay.
I'd make a motion to approve that we obtain outside counsel to provide litigation support and consultation services to law.
Alright, Alder Prophet makes that motion. Is there a second? Seconded by Alder Presley. Discussion on that motion? Alder Weary?
I didn't hear the motion.
Better repeat it. Alder Prophet, can you repeat?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the city retaining outside counsel to provide litigation support and consultative services to our law department regarding election law.
Thanks, Alder. Alder Weary?
Thank you. Obviously, I'm going to oppose this. I'm going to retain any rights. You know, I'm not going to endorse any of this. I don't think we should. I think, I think we're going down the same path that we did before with the same advisors, the same advice, all that. God bless you if it gets the right way to do. I don't. Okay, I wish you would reach out to others. I really still do. And that's within your purview. Okay, if they reach out to you, you still could bring that back. Alright. Thank you.
I will still consider, correct?
Anything further? Alder Presley?
I think by approving this, we give the attorney more options. So, and if we want more options, this is the way we do it, rather than lessening the options to pro bono. So I am in favor.
Anything else? Alder Galvin?
I'm in favor of this also. I understand the contention that, that some of the council members have. But I will reiterate that this firm has represented us before. We went through the Gableman investigation. We went through, I don't know how many investigations at the legislative level. The city has endured requests for thousands upon thousands upon thousands of copies of paperwork that people have gone through with a fine tooth comb. And out of all that, all that trouble, all the cost to the taxpayers, not one legitimate complaint or even the ability to file one charge against the city. And I think that our law department and our staff have done their job. And I think the representation we got at that time assisted us in that. And I think that's proof that they're there, working for the city, for the citizens of this city, and not for a political group or a political agenda. Thank you.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. All in favor will Alder Weary requests a board vote on Alder Prophet's motion. So we will do that.
You may vote. Alder Eck?
No.
You may just fly.
And that motion succeeds seven to four. So with that, we're on to informational, building report and municipal court, monthly financial report included in your packet, resolutions, entertain a motion to suspend the rules here potentially. Alder Prophet makes a motion to suspend the rules. Take up these items with one roll call vote. Seconded by Alder Hinkfuss. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye? Oppose nay? The ayes have it, the rules are suspended? Entertaining a motion to adopt? Motion to adopt made by Alder Stevens, seconded by Alder Dewey. Discussion here. Seeing none, all in favor, or I'm sorry, we have to use the board.
You may vote. Alder Eck?
Alder Eck? On the resolutions? If you're still there? Alder Eck, is she? Alder Eck, we can't hear you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yep, this is on resolutions.
Okay, yes.
Thank you. Okay. Sounds good.
Alright, you may just fly.
Alright. And those resolutions are adopted unanimously. Onto ordinances, first reading. We do have an ordinance here that was referred back to committee. That's three. So I'd entertain a motion potentially to take up all the others with one roll call vote, unless there are others that should be handled separately? Okay, Alder Weary makes a motion to take up all those ordinances with the exception of item three. Is there a second? Seconded by Alder Stevens. All in favor will say aye? Oppose nay? Oppose nay?
Aye.
The ayes have it, rules are suspended. Motion to advance made by Alder Weary. Seconded by Alder DeLee. All in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Um, all those ordinances with the exception of three is advanced on item three. An interim motion? Uh, refer. Uh, Alder Stevens makes a motion to refer this item back to the Protection Policy Committee, seconded by Alder Galvin. Discussion there. Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay?
Aye.
The ayes have it and that is referred, uh, to petitions and communications. Adfirmment. Motion to adjourn made by Alder Stevens, seconded by Alder Presley. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay?
Aye.
The ayes have it, we're adjourned. Thanks.